Hello, my name is Jeff Huff. I'm the Chair of the West Zoning Board. It is 6:30. We appreciate everyone attending for the meeting this evening. First thing that we're going to do is if I could ask the clerk to take the role.
John DeGrand.
Present.
Terry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Present.
Roger Spears.
Present.
Jeff Huff.
Present.
Craig Connell.
Present.
And Bob Paulson.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
All right, so all present except Terry. Thank you very much. If you could read the statement for the hybrid and in-person virtual meeting, please.
This meeting is now being recorded. Please silence all electronic devices. This meeting is being held in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There is also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. If you are using Zoom, you may participate in the meeting using your computer, telephone, or other electronic device. For Zoom participants, chat will be disabled once the meeting begins. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app to notify planning staff of your desire to speak. To activate this function, click Raise Hand in the webinar controls at the bottom of the screen. By telephone, you may raise your hand by dialing *9. Please do not utilize the raise hand function until the start of the agenda item about which you desire to comment. We will take comments from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. The moderator will call on individuals who have raised their hand. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by name or phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the Chair designates a different time period in order to accommodate all the speakers. If you share concerns, comments, or points made by others, please refrain from repeating those comments and instead note for the record that you agree with a previous individual's comments. The Chair may modify these procedures as needed to conduct an orderly and efficient meeting. For board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking and please speak into the microphones so that people attending via Zoom can hear you and the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Do we have any Zoom attendees? Can we? Or?
Hi Chair, at this time we do not.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So we'll go to the agenda items. We have reviewed the agenda. Is there anything that we need to add, delete, revise, approve the agenda? Is anybody on the board? Are we good? Okay. Any disclosure of conflicts of interest on any items that we'll be covering tonight?
None.
None? Okay. And disclosure of external contacts and discussions?
None.
Okay, so there's no across the board. The next thing we'll be doing is approval of the minutes. Have the minutes from last meeting. If I could get a motion and a second if we do approve the minutes as they are presented.
I move that we approve the minutes from last meeting. This is Bob Paulson.
Okay, do I have a second?
Roger Spears.
Roger. Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much. The board reports, if you could share those with us.
Oh, I think we were going to, did we get a motion, did we get a vote or a motion for approval of the minutes?
Approved that. Okay, so if we can get that approval via vote, if we can, clerk, if you could do that for us?
John DeGrand.
Aye.
Terry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Roger Spears.
Aye.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
I guess I'll abstain since I wasn't here last time.
Okay. And Bob Paulson.
Aye.
All right, so the minutes will be approved. Now we can go to the board reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. For Board of County Commissioners' actions, there was one application, if you recall, at the last meeting for this zoning board. And that application was considered by the Board of County Commissioners on September 14th. That was application number W23-304-CUP. That's the Jack's Hollow CUP for 30450 West 143rd Street. The Board of County Commissioners remanded that application back to the zoning board for consideration with some directives to reconsider. So that's why that's on your agenda this evening under Old Business. And that was the only Board of County Commissioners action for this board.
Okay.
And if you'd like, I could give planning commission actions as well. So for the planning commission, the last meeting was on August 22nd. For that meeting, the planning commission adopted new bylaws, had their election of officers. They also considered an update regarding non-conforming parcels. There was no action by the planning commission at that date, but it was an update that staff provided for that. That will come back to the planning commission at a later date for consideration of amendments to the zoning regulations. So we'll provide an update once that does return to the planning commission. And there were just some other board reports that we provided at that meeting. But that's all for the planning commission's actions at this time.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. All right, so now we are going to go to the business that we have before us this evening. The first one is what we just referenced a minute ago about the old business. It's the application number W23304CUP, Conditional Use Permit Renewal for 30450 West 143rd Street. At this time, we're going to have the staff share information with us at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Leipzig, the Planning Department. I just wanted to provide a brief explanation on the remand process for the Board of County Commissioners. It's interesting to have this right out of the gate after your second meeting. This is in accordance with Article 4, Section 2D of our subdivision regulations where, and also our state planning law, enabling law, that essentially when the zoning board makes a recommendation on an item, goes to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners can either accept that recommendation in its entirety or remand it back. So if they want to revise something on the recommendation that was made, they remand it back to the zoning board. Then the zoning board hears it again, which is what is happening here in just a few minutes. Then the recommendation will go back to the Board of County Commissioners. When it goes back to them the second time, then the Board of County Commissioners can either, they can amend the zoning board's recommendation or adjust it however they wish to do so. But we call it the ping pong rule, and the first time that goes forward, they have to accept it in its entirety or remand it back. And so this evening, you have an item for you that was remanded back. The board did consider this item at the September 14th meeting. And they did have some concerns over the length, the term of the conditional use permit, as well as the number of vehicles that are allowed per evening. And Michelle will go to that, will say that in more detail with you this evening. But I did, I wanted to provide a more detailed explanation of that remand action and what that entails.
Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. Michelle Lineiger, County Planning Staff. I'm going to reference the memo that was emailed out, but I put a paper copy in front of you. And then there is a copy of the previous staff report, which is what you saw last month. And conveniently, you already have the minutes from the last meeting. So if you need to reference that for a discussion or anything, that is also available for you. As Jay said, the directive of the Board of County Commissioners was to reconsider a one-year term for the permit and consider, basically, it's maintaining what the previous approval was for one year and up to 240 cars or vehicles per night. There were, had some concerns with the increase in traffic, whether the property could handle that, whether the impacts in the increase in traffic would impact the neighbors negatively. And they also talked about a stair step increase per year, which the board had briefly talked about last time. So those are really the highlights of their discussion. On your memo is the recommendation that this board had with the stipulations changed to three years and the 304 cars as recommended. So your directive tonight is to reconsider the recommendation. Your options are to send the same recommendation forward as you did before, or to tweak it, however you see fit. There's no public hearing associated with a remand, but the applicant is here and can address any questions if there are some.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. At this time, we are going to open it up to where the, on the public hearings, oh, we're not going to.
There's no public hearing associated with it. It's really just a discussion.
Just a discussion on this.
And you can ask staff and the applicant any questions.
Okay, all right. Sounds good. So then, at this time, we need to talk about this. Your ideas, what changes that the Board of County Commissioners had presented to us, or, you know, the two options, or that we stay with what we have recommended and send that back to them. So any, yes, sir?
Craig Connell, question for Michelle, I guess. Were you present at the B O C C meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So was there any new information presented that wasn't presented to this body in August that would have made them want to change the terms?
I know Commissioner Alan Brandon stated she had had some phone conversations with some people, but she did not elaborate.
Okay, that was the entire basis for making these changes?
They just, they really weren't comfortable with the potential increase in traffic on the road and whether the site could handle that increase.
I did go back and watch that meeting and that discussion between them. It really did have to do with the amount of increase that we went with, number of cars per half hour, and then the concern about traffic flow. And then the parking, and I think that was resolved because I think there was another event that it was, that the parking was an issue. Since this isn't a parking event, it's a drive-through primarily. So I think that part of it was somewhat resolved on that side, but I did watch it. And it seemed to be mainly with years, you know, instead of doing it three, they recommended one because we've had a good year. They didn't want to, you know, take a chance of it, you know, going three and then having to wait to be able to resolve that issue. And then also the amount of vehicles per half hour.
Bob Paulson, I'm going to just state that I disagree with the recommendation, but due to the timeframe, if we don't go with what the commissioners have requested, we jeopardize the ability for them to operate this year, and I think that's just not fair to them.
Okay. No, I appreciate the input.
Good night. I'm going to address your question. We actually have it set up so that it will go back to the Board of Zoning Appeals and be with action taken on the 5th of October with anticipation of 6th of October. So it's kind of close.
It is.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, as Michelle noted, this will not in any way, regardless of the action, the recommendation from the zoning board, this will not hinder the applicant's ability to operate on the timeline that they were looking for. This action, this application will return to the Board of County Commissioners on October 5th. It's a very fast turnaround. We wouldn't normally do a two-week turnaround from a zoning board action, but because it's the remand and we're able to do it, we're going to be able to bring it forward in two weeks. That will meet the timeline that we need. So there'd be no worry about timing for the applicant. The zoning board can recommend whatever they want and still not affect anything.
So either way, they will be able to have proceed.
Yes, provided the zoning board does provide a recommendation to return back to the B O C C. If you approve that to return, regardless of what it is and they're stipulating, it will be able to return back to the B O C C in two weeks.
Okay.
And if we don't go with the recommendations, there's a good chance that they might reject it.
Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, I would say the Board of County Commissioners, if there was a recommendation by this board to deny the CUP, that could potentially cause reason for the B O C C to reconsider and not recommend approval. That's possible, but if the board recommends approval in any form with whatever the stipulations are, I think it will return what the action is by the board. We don't know what that will be yet, but the zoning board, regardless of what is decided here, the B O C C can do whatever it chooses when it returns back in two weeks. They can concur with the zoning board's new directive or recommendations, or they can overturn your recommendation.
Jeff Huff here. The options on the second page, yeah, so I think that, does that help alleviate your concerns on, not really? No.
John DeGrand, Sean, what we send back, if we send back the same thing, the Board of County Commissioners will make a decision and they can change what we say and just go with that, right?
That's right. They can change.
Whatever they decide at that point is the final decision.
You don't have to worry about coming back again.
Right.
They can do whatever they want.
Back and forth.
They can agree, they can overturn, they can do whatever they want the next time it comes back.
It'll be like, we still don't like your recommendation. We're going to do this. Or, yeah, okay, if you guys feel that strongly about it, they might do it. I don't know.
Okay. Anybody else?
Donna Getzmann. Michelle, could you refresh our memory on how many cars came through last year?
Yeah, this is Michelle Lineiger. They said that they averaged 100, not averaged. Their highest amount was 167.
This is Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, to add to that what Michelle said. The applicant, the reason why the applicant was requesting an increase was because they were somewhat, they felt they were somewhat limited by the limits they had per night and their sign-up genius. They felt that that would potentially restrict the number of people who might be coming in and that they could accommodate. So that's why they were requesting more, and that's why staff had recommended approval to increase it. But as we talked about with the directors of the B O C C, they asked to reconsider that and for the board to consider that limit again. So, but that was why the applicant was asking for more than what they had on any given night last year.
Jeff Huff again. I don't know if you've been to any of the festivals or the events that have been happening this fall, but people want to participate. They want to be involved. They want to get out. They want to experience these things. I don't want to influence your vote, but I mean, I felt like we covered the information, made resolution, conciliation on years, brought it down, went up on numbers. So before I ask for a motion from anybody or which option that we should choose, is there any other questions or input that you would like to share?
John DeGrand, I'll make this quick comment.
Okay.
I think if we're going to send an increase in the number of vehicles back, we should maybe consider cutting back to the one-year or two-year so that if something does go awry, it isn't a three-year, five-year window. I mean, I know that's not what the applicant wants to hear. That's because it costs a lot of money to come back every year and get the CUP extended. But it sounds to me like the Board of County Commissioners is unsure if a big jump in the number of cars allowed will cause a problem or not. And if they, if it does, they don't want to be on the hook for three years.
If I remember correctly, I feel like there were things in place to where if it, if it got out of control, that there was concerns, that we could address those. And, you know, there could be a point where we step in at that time. So I think the three years is extending, but we also inside of that have opportunities to be able to address it before that three years is up. Am I, am I correct? Yes. So there are, there are things in place to be able to make that happen. So I feel like that, you know, I don't want to, the first time they sent it back, we sent it back the exact same, but I, that's where I am leaning, so.
Mr. Chairman, this is Roger Spears. I believe that we came up with a good compromise last time. The applicant had a request for a lot longer period.
Sure.
We pulled it back to what I believe was a reasonable number. We increased the number of vehicles per night a little bit above the planning commission's recommendations. We did not go as high as the applicant had asked. But if you're, if you're ready for a motion, I would.
If you guys, if the, okay, so if you would like to present that, oh, I'm sorry, one.
Yeah, Craig Connell, one more question for Michelle or staff is if we were to propose a, say, approve a three-year recommendation and a limited, say, 240 cars or whatever they're recommending, can the applicant come back year two, say, next year and ask for an amendment to this approved permit for 300 cars? Or for, assuming everything went well, how does that process work?
This is Michelle Lineiger. Yes, they can come back and ask for amendment, but it would be the same process that they are currently going through to do that amendment.
Okay.
This is Roger Spears. Just one point. In last week's discussion, the 240 had been the number that was approved the previous years. And the planning commission had recommended, I believe, something like around, around 280 or, or, there was a number in between
Yes.
that number and what we approved. We bumped up just a little bit because the numbers, the explanation that the applicant gave was that even with that limit of 240, they never got close to it. The highest they had was 167.
Yeah, it was 304. Jeff Huff, it was 304 that the staff had recommended, so.
And we went to 304, yeah, I believe.
From that. Okay. Is that good?
Yep.
All right.
Well, I would, I would recommend approval of the CUP renewal with no changes to the stipulations.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A second? Okay. And if we can.
This was Bob Paulson, meaning as we sent it up last time.
Yeah, this is Sean Pendley, Planning Staff. I'd like to clarify, is the recommendation with the stipulations as previously recommended by the zoning board? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. If we could take a vote?
Aye.
Terry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Roger Spears.
Aye.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Craig Connell.
Aye.
And Bob Paulson.
Aye.
All right, 6-0 is what I get? Is that what you have?
Yes.
All right, perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. All right.
Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, Planning Staff, would just clarify too, this, so this application then will be forwarded to the Board of County Commissioners for final action on October 5th at 9:30 a.m. in the board hearing room, 111 South Trier Street, Olathe.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. All right, let's go to new business. We're on a roll now. All right, so application W23313SP, Special Permit, 90 Leewood Drive. If we could have our staff presentation, 10 minutes?
Won't be that long. Good evening, Michelle Lineiger, County Planning Staff. This application is for a special permit for a KDOT operational and maintenance facility. Just some background, a special permit is like a conditional use permit similar to what you saw with the last item, but the purpose of the special permit is to permit limited category of uses which provide essential services and infrastructure to the public, typically on a long-term basis. So you will see parks, you will see substations, you will see maintenance facilities for the road crews, things like that. They're not, they're not necessarily governmental entities, but they provide for support for the public, for, you know, water, streets, electricity and the such. So the special, the real big difference between the two is a special permit has no term limit where a conditional use permit would, which tends to make more sense in, for example, electrical substation, probably not going to go away in 10 years. So we, we've created this special permit for examples just like this so that we're not having to revisit those too much. Here's a map of the subject property. You can see it's located in the New Century Air Center. The existing facility for the KDOT subarea complex is located just south of there in Gardner, just north of the intersection of Santa Fe and Claire Road or next to McDonald's. That location is, is within the flight path of the main runway and also within the runway protection zone. And the FAA is not in favor of that. So if there's an opportunity where we can remove those buildings and gathering spaces of people out of those runway protection zones, the FAA would like that to happen just for reasons of preventing potential hazards to the airspace. So that's what we're looking at here. And this slide shows an aerial and closer views. You can see the property is located just west east of New Century Parkway along Leewood Drive. It's area outlined in red. The air center is a little bit different. They aren't parcels, they're lease lines because the airport commission owns all of the property, so they delineate it by lease lines. The leased parcel is approximately 10 acres in Zone PEC 3, which is an industrial district, as is the adjacent property. And if you look at the aerial, you can see the character of the surrounding area area is industrial warehouse and hangar uses, which are compatible with a proposed maintenance facility. Additionally, the facility is in close proximity to state highways of which the facility maintains. Here's the overall site plan. I don't expect you to be able to read this. Just some highlights on here includes an office maintenance, wash base structure, equipment storage structure, salt and sand storage structure, spreader storage, fuel tanks, brine tanks, access to both Leewood Drive and Highland Drive, and there's some gravel storage space. Here's a nice rendering that they provided that gives you more of a real-life look at what, what the site is going to look like with, as far as the buildings, the office, the spreader, the fuel location and such. And that'll all be enclosed and screened with a fence. And also, if you look at the plans or in your staff report, there's a landscaping plan which also helps to provide that screening. Staff does recommend approval of the special permit to allow the construction of a KDOT subarea facility subject to the stipulations outlined in. subarea facility, subject to the stipulations outlined in the staff report. There is a proposed motion if you see fit to use it, and I can answer any questions.
All right. Um, any questions from the, from the board?
I just wanted, and Craig Connell, aesthetic question, I guess, for you. What is the purpose of this loop road behind the salt brine storage area?
Um, that is a question better for the applicant.
Okay.
I think it's just for circulation, circulation, so they can kind of get out of that storage area and then get to the driveway out to Highland. But the applicant can clarify that.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you. All right. Um, if the applicant would like to come at this time, you can step to the podium, just state your name and city and state.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Barrett, another Roger. Rogers rules sometimes. So have kind of camaraderie. Um, I'm, uh, with SK Design Group Civil Engineers in Overland Park, Kansas. We have the privilege of being the representatives for the Kansas Department of Transportation for this facility. Um, the, uh, the big picture is, is this is not a new facility. But it is a new facility. So it's, it's basically they're, they're, they're really not adding any staff. They're not adding any operational expertise. They're scooting it from point A to point B, getting it out of harms way. And it's, it's, uh, in a location that has been worked out through, through many years of negotiation. So that gives you an idea of what, so it, it's been providing services for this part of the state for several years. This is one of 40 that case, uh, that, uh, KDOT uses to help maintain our safety of our highways throughout the state. So it's, um, and to answer your question, um, kind of preempt your, uh, asking it again. But yes, that, that is a loop road. It's, um, this plan is basically conceived and, and requested by KDOT. We had very little to do with it. They kind of know what they want, you know, and they kind of know what they need, which is a good thing. And so that gravel area is mainly a lay down area. Um, the gravel drive is meant so that if they have to drive on it, they don't, they're not driving in, in mud. Are they going to drive on it very often? Probably not. Will there be a vehicle on there every year? Maybe not. So it's not a, a, a high use area. The only high use area is, um, is the pavement area that you see on the plans. They requested two driveways. So it could be, so they could easily go in and out and then use those for one way, uh, each if they needed to. Um, but it, it is going to be the vast majority, if not, except for the office building, small little office building is set back very far from the street. It, it, it's meant to be a good neighbor, have an eight foot tall privacy fence around the operations, the back of house operations so that, uh, so they're good neighbors. And we've been working closely with, with, uh, Larry Pete, with, um, the airport, um, obviously through this, not only them, but everyone at KDOT. And of course, we want to thank Diane and Sean and, and Michelle for, for helping, uh, to go through this process, even though it's going to be a, a state-run facility. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any, uh, questions from the board?
Bob Paulson, um, just a quick, I think we alluded to it, but are they intending to close the facility there by the McDonald's in Gardner once this is complete?
Correct. I believe they have an, an offer for sale and they're going to utilize that, those funds for this, uh, facility.
I cannot, uh, imagine being in the runway protection zone. That, that's got to be kind of nerve, unnerving a little bit, I would think. So, all right. Any other questions? If there are no further questions, I think we're ready for a motion. No, we are not.
This, this is Michelle Linegar. This, uh, project requires a public hearing. So you need to open the public hearing and ask for any public comment.
That is right.
All right. So I'm opening up to the public. Any public, uh, questions or information or questions you'd like to ask? Does not appear. So guess what's now? I need a motion.
Bob Paulson, I moved at the board approved application number W23-313-SP for a special permit for the KDOT, uh, subarea complex for the reasons and stipulations recommended by staff set forth in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
Craig Connell, second.
All right. A motion and a second. Uh, if we could take the vote then?
John DeGrande.
Hi.
Terry Atwell was absent. Donna Getzman.
Hi.
Roger Spears.
Hi.
Jeff Huff.
Hi.
Craig Connell.
Hi.
And Bob Paulson.
Hi.
I see it as six oh. Is that what you have?
Correct.
All right. Perfect. Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Chairman, I just, this is Michelle Linegar. I just wanted to add that this item will go to the Board of County Commissioners at their October 19th meeting, which is held at 9:30 here in the county administration building located at 111 South Cherry Street.
All right. Now, next piece of business is, um, so the application W23314PPFP preliminary and final plat for 31540 West 150 First Street. Uh, if we could have the staff report?
Thank you. This is Karen Miller with the planning department. And, um, this application, um, is, um, a preliminary and final plat, uh, to create three lots. Uh, it's zoned RUR rural district, which has a minimum lot size of at least 10 acres. Up on the screen is the parcel proposed to be platted. There's two frontages, Kill Creek Road and 150 First Street. Both of those streets are considered type three carnip roads. Carnip stands for Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan. And so that's how the county plans for what we think the, the future road needs are. That isn't an, an actual road construction plan. It's just our idea of what roads will be, will be minor roads and what roads will be more important and carry more traffic. So a type three road is the, uh, it, there's designations type one, two, and three roads. Type three roads, um, are, are thought to carry the most traffic in the future. And so these two type three roads are zoning regulations upholds that idea by requiring at least 1,320 feet per, uh, road frontage per driveway. And that's going to come into, to play here in a sec. I'm going to show you what the plat looks like. Here is the proposed plat. Um, lot one is about 100 and 111 acres. Lots two and three are 20 acres. And so the first way that we, um, address the type three road, um, along the Kill Creek frontage is that lots two and three individually only have, uh, three, 700 plus feet of frontage. That's not enough for a single driveway. So we solved that problem by a shared driveway, um, between the two lots at the, the joint property line. And, um, by doing that, there, um, for this plat is about 1,400, uh, feet, uh, per, per driveway. And that is more than enough frontage to, to uphold that, that type three road designation. And so it, it's kind of a good balance between providing, um, two lots instead of one lot for the, for the landowner, but it still upholds that idea of, of maintaining the carrying capacity of, of a type three road because we want to minimize the number of roads, sorry, number of driveways onto a type three road because those driveways impede the traffic flow. So that's the purpose of that. Um, and so then, um, we also look at the frontage on 150 First Street. And I'll, first I'll talk a little bit more about this plat and then I'll explain that. So, um, if you'll notice, there's a piece at the corner that's not part of the plat. This was, uh, divided off of the, the main property in 1995 and, um, a house was built, um, and a, a driveway, um, in 1995 was put on to lot one, serving, um, this adjacent property. And the, the reason is, uh, site distance. If, if you start moving this existing driveway here further to the west, the site distance gets worse. And when I say site distance, I mean, when you're, um, on the driveway pulling up to the road and you look left and right, how far can you see? And so, um, um, so we have this driveway. It was put here to, because of the improved site distance. Um, and then we also have another driveway here. And I'm going to, uh, show a little bit of a, a, a closer view. So here is the overall parcel again. Here's Kill Creek Road. Here's 150 First. Now I'm going to zoom in closer so we can ta, take a look at what's, um, going on. So here's the, the residence built in 1995 that we talked about. It, it met all of our, um, county regulations. This was totally allowed at the time. It was okay. Um, here is another existing driveway that serves the existing house on the lot. This is the only residence on, on the, existing on the plat on lot one, two, or three. Um, this, this house was built in about the 60s. Um, and again, this house is completely, was completely conforming with the regulations at the time that it was built. Um, and so this frontage right here, it has two driveways to, to meet our regulations. It would need to have 1320 times two or 2,640 feet of frontage for those two existing driveways. And so, so our first, our first initial thought was, well, just have that driveway, uh, be moved over onto the lot that it, it serves. Um, but then, you know, we got more information and we realized, well, that's going to not be as safe. Um, and so there's a good reason to keep this existing driveway that, that when it was created, it was, it was con, conforming. So we have a remedy for that. It's a plat exception. And so, so staff recommends approval of that plat exception to allow two driveways on, um, the total, this frontage is 1,700 feet. So to, so allow two driveways on 1,700 feet instead of the 2640 that would be required. We think that it's reasonable. It upholds the intent of the regulations because if you look at the two driveways, there's two driveways along 2,640. So it meets the spirit and intent. It, it creates a safer, um, situation. There's also another, um, plat exception that we had to think about. These two existing structures, the home and the barn are closer, um, to, to the, the front yard, um, the front building line than, um, allowed by the regulations. Again, these were ex, uh, conforming when they were, um, built back in the 1960s and even, um, earlier than that. Um, so, so they're existing. They're, uh, grandfathered in, they're legal non-conforming. Um, the other thing we thought about is, are they so close to the road that they would, would impede improving the road in the future? If so, we might think a little bit harder about recommending approval of the plat exception. But there's plenty of room to do a future road improvement. And the, the, um, the two structures, they, um, im, impede upon the, the required setback by 25 and 20 feet. So, um, so plenty of room to improve a road. It's not that much of, um, of an imposition into what's required. And then also then their existing structures. So sta, again, staff recommends approval of that plat exception. So, so plat, uh, so planning staff recommends approval of the plat and rec, recommends approval of the two plat exceptions for, um, the, the frontage per driveway required and also the plat exception for the, the front yard setback. Um, and with that, there, um, there's a proposed motion, motion on the screen if somebody cares to use it. And that motion is also on page 12 of the staff report.
All right. Uh, any questions from the board?
I do have one question. Roger Spears, um, it's not directly applicable to, to this plat request, but you, you mentioned the 1320 for a type three road.
Mm-hmm.
Curiosity, what's the driveway spacing requirement for type one or two?
Sure. So, um, in a section, thing, things are, um, are kind of based on a mile section. And then, um, a half mile is 2640. That's a type three. Divide that in half. A, um, a type two is a 660. And then divide that in half. A type one is a 330. And a typical 10 acre lot is 330 by 1320. If you multiply that, that's 10 acres.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions from the board?
Uh, Greg Connell, I noticed on the other side of the road, there's, I don't know, seven or eight lots. Are those driveways in compliance with our current regulations for spacing?
Those, um, if I remember correctly, that, that was created, that's a plat. Let me go to that. And, uh, also owned by the same landowner. It was, at the time, it was owned by the same landowner. And no, that, uh, that requirement was not in effect at the time that the plat was approved. So, um, that, the, those, the type one, two, and three, it was adopted about, um, the early 2000s, 19, maybe 1999, something like that. So that, that tells me this plat was approved prior to that.
Bob Paulson, another question, um, actually first one on this one. Um, so with the two existing drives and the existing setback of the buildings on 151st Street, um, since this portion really isn't, has no effect on the other, um, lots that were splitting off of this, why do those need exceptions since they predate our regulations? Does that make sense?
I think so. When, so right now, because the plat is not approved, these have, have legal non-conforming status. But when we, um, do something like a plat, then all of, all of the current regulations apply. And so, um, even it's an existing situation. It, it's fine. It can stay there. But once you plat, you, you have to address those nonconformities and, and give them some kind of remedy. And it, and basically you, you acknowledge them.
This is Jeff Huff. So in the future, if they were to replat again, then they would have to come up to current, if, no.
They're existing.
They're just there. So let, the one time they would have to, um, comply, let's say that, um, the, the landowner who lives in the house decides that, um, they would like a different house on the lot and they want to demolish the house. I'm not saying they do, but they, let's say they want to demolish the house and rebuild. Then, um, that new house would have to follow the setback requirements.
Okay. And then you mentioned Jeff Huff again, uh, the road, there are no existing plans for road expansions in that area?
No, no, there, nothing on the books that, that Johnson County Public Works is planning on doing.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, any other questions?
And this is a public hearing, so you can open it to the public. Oh, I'm sorry. I got, um, the, the, uh, landowner is here if he would like to. Oh, I'm sorry, I got um, the the landowner is here if he would like to make.
Yeah, we're going to open it up to to public. So um, if we don't have any more questions from the board, then we'll open it up to a public hearing.
I miscued you, the applicants here, if um, he, so you can ask if he would like.
Applicant.
I'm sorry.
That's what I meant to say. I do apologize.
I really don't have anything to say. We're just wanting to split two twenties off of one hundred and fifty and. It's all I've got. So. Got any questions, I can try and answer.
Okay.
Jason Eastland, sorry about that.
Okay. Perfect, uh, any questions from the board?
Jason, Roger Spears, just for clarification, uh, you're you're the developer for the two new lots.
I am just the real estate agent.
Okay.
Yep, yep, I'm not, we're just wanting to sell two twenties. Somebody can build a house and a barn or whatever they want. And what they do after we sell, it's really, I'm out. I don't know.
Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, can open it up for a public uh, public hearing. If anybody would like to ask any questions or make any statements. Okay, if you can just state your name and city and state.
I'm Jennifer Gomnitz. I live at one six nine oh four West eighty third Street, Lenexa, Kansas. But I also own the property that um, is next to the two twenty acre uh, lots along with another neighbor. And so I did have a question about the type three um, Kill Creek being a type three um, road. It's a a gravel road and it doesn't go through. So I was really surprised here that it's that. Is is it, is, are there um, plans to pave it? Do we know? Does anybody know?
Uh, Mr. Chairman.
We go if. Provide a response following all comments.
Yeah, once you, once, so what we'll do is we'll, i- if there's other comments, we'll go through that and then we'll address the the question then.
Okay. And then as far as um, rural zoning, if you could address what that means. So one of them is one hundred and nine point five acres. If they were to want to subdivide that further, they would have to go through this process again. Is that correct? So they can't just all of a sudden have a subdivision there. Okay. Um, also, they, the the two twenties sharing a lane. So there would only be one driveway added. Is that what I'm understanding? Okay. I think that was it. The other driveway would be off one hundred and fifty first, is that correct?
And we can, we can address all these questions.
Yeah, if sta- uh, staff can provide a response to all these questions.
Okay. Okay, we're just trying to kind of figure out the the lay of the new, the new lots. Also, as far as fencing um, on a existing fence, um, if somebody could address what what happens is if a new um, the twenty acres decides they want a different kind of fence that they share. Um, how, what the process is for that with zoning. Okay.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that has, or do you want to address those questions?
Yeah, so I'm Penley County Plan Staff. Yeah, I guess we'll see if there's any other public speakers. If not, staff can provide a response to all those questions. And I I may ask Leslie, if anyone is on Zoom with their hand raised.
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, yeah, Karen Miller could probably answer these questions best, but I'll try to follow up with anything if uh, she has questions. Thanks.
Sure. Um, so the first question was, are there any plans to pave the road? And no, and and the statement was made that it's right now, it's just a gravel road. And so I I kind of tried to hit upon that when I talked about the comprehensive arterial road network plan. It's just that, it's a plan. Um, the idea is to identify those those nodes that would create a lot of of traffic. For instance, tra- traffic from Gardner to Edgerton, from Gardner up to De Soto or K ten, um, you know, um, that type of thing. And with that, uh, we created this network then. And the the type three roads are the ones that would would eventually in the future, once there's enough development and growth. Um, th- then at that point, the um, the improvement would be made. But it's just thought, well, this is a logical path for the future. Um, um, to create a a logical road network for the county. And and we we completely acknowledge that maybe right now it might be a gravel road. But that's what planning is all about. Because, you know, I mean, think about when you were in like Olathe and Overland Park thirty years ago. You know, I mean, the 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 edges of that city were a lot different than they were now. There was a lot of gravel roads there back then. And so that's just, it's planning for the future. And and most of the time, when um, one of those major upgrades is done, the city is probably annexed the road anyway. And and that's when generally those big projects are done. Um, the the question about if, you know, lot one's over a hundred acres. Yes, that would uh, have to be another plat to further divide that. Um, all platted lots um, need a plat to divide that. Um. Um, there was a question about what will the future driveways look like? Uh, let me go to the plat. So the the, there will only be one new driveway. The one driveway would be right here at the shared property line. Um, right here and right here along the frontage of lot two and three, there's limits of no access. So there there cannot be, if this plat is approved, there cannot be any new driveways here. And there's, uh, it's also the plat makes it clear that um, along one hundred and fifty first street frontage here, that those two, two driveways are the only driveways that can be um, put on the on the plat. Um, there was a question about um, fencing. That's not really the purview of this plat application. Um, and that that would be a a matter between the the property owners. And I think, I think that's all.
Okay. Um, so at this time, does the board have any other questions for uh, planners? Applicants, public?
Roger Spears, I have just a comment about the the Karnup study. That was done in the mid nineties and approved in nineteen ninety eight. Uh, twenty five years ago, uh, we had no intermodal facility. We had no Panasonic. It was the best plan at the time for what might be the way to convey traffic.
That is exactly right. This is Karen Miller. And just a note, um, staff has recently recommended to the planning commission to take a look at at the Karnip plan and see if it needs some updating at the moment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, at this time, we will close the public comments. Um. So then, our discussion among the board, is there anything that we feel like we need to discuss? Anything that you guys would like to? And ladies and gentlemen, uh, would like to share?
Donna Getzmann. I move that the board approve the application number W twenty three dash three one four dash P P slash F P for preliminary and final plat for three residential lots to be known as boner estates. And to approve the two requested plat exceptions for the reasons and subject to the stipulations recommended by staff and listed in the staff report.
Do I have a second?
John DeGrand, I'll second it.
A second, uh, if we can take a vote.
For boner estates, John DeGrand.
Aye.
Cherry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Roger Spears.
Aye.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Greg Connell.
Aye.
And Bob Paulson.
Aye.
I have six zero, is that correct?
Is it?
All right, it looks like it is approved. Uh, let us go to the.
Karen Miller again, and this will be heard by the Borda County Commissioner as October nineteenth in this hearing room at nine thirty in the morning. And that's one eleven South Cherry Street in the county admin building. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right. Now, let's move to application W two three three one five P D P F D P Preliminary and Final Development Plan. Two seven three zero two West one fifty ninth street. Uh, if we could have our planner make their presentation.
Diane Wicklund, uh, Johnson County Planning Department. Um, I would like to enter in the staff report dated September thirteen uh, twenty twenty three into the uh, record. Um, I would also like to enter in uh, three additional handouts into the record. Uh, and they would have been handed out um, at your desk on the dais. Uh, the first one is um, a staff, staff uh, memo to staff from Paul Sinelli uh, dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty three. Um, and there were just some staff comments, um, uh, kind of revisions um, or comments uh, for the staff report. The uh, the second item is a uh, with the revised Public Works comments dated September nineteenth, twenty twenty three. And then finally, and you'll see this um, up on the screen later, but uh, some staff is recommending a revision to stipulation twenty three. And so uh, just entering those into the record. So um, the application, uh, the applicant here is uh, Paul Sinelli on behalf of Yukon Real Estate Partners. And the landowner is Johnson County. Uh, the site address is two seven three oh, three zero two West one hundred and fifty ninth street out at the New Century Air Center. Uh, the property is vacant. Uh, it has a P E C three zoning, which is planned uh, light industrial park zoning. And uh, the site size is thirty six acres. Uh, the applicant is proposing to construct an approximate uh, two hundred and ninety one thousand square foot uh, building at the New Century Air Center. Uh, this facility will be a refrigerated uh, storage warehouse for uh, food grade products uh, which require cold storage. Uh, the building is approximately fifty six feet tall. And I'll uh, show you some graphics here in just a second. And also, uh, just to note, part of that development plan uh, shows some future phases. Uh, there's a first phase uh, which I already talked about. Phase one B uh, which is, will be on the north side of the uh, original building is about ninety six thousand eight hundred square feet. And then phase two will be a separate building uh, in a future building. It will be about two hundred and thirteen thousand uh, square feet approximately. Uh, and then also, and uh, I believe the applicant will go over this later, but uh, they have uh, selected a refrigeration system that utilizes a refrigerant um, uh, that's broadly defined as non-toxic and non-flammable. And it is not the in hydro ammonia. Um, so just uh, kind of wanted to share that information. Um, and so to just go over the graphics here real quick. Um, so this is a picture of the site uh, and the subject property is outlined in yellow. Here's an aerial view of the surrounding area. Uh, the subject property is outlined in blue. Uh, just kind of shows you the um, uh, surrounding property and those uh, parcels there that uh, front moonlight uh, on it towards the west. Here's a copy of the preliminary and final development plan showing the initial building. And then also showing that uh, future expansion to the north and then that separate future uh, building to the west. Uh, here's a render rendering of the proposed building and what what it will look like. And then these are also the uh, building elevation drawings for the proposed uh, building. Um, uh, also to note that the uh, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on August uh, twenty second. And they did provide a uh, kind of a meeting summary that's also in your packet of uh, the topics and questions that were talked about. Uh, in terms of the roads. Um. Uh, the employee parking will be accessed from one hundred and fifty ninth street. And the traffic, uh, truck traffic will use the one hundred and fifty seventh street entrance to access the site. Uh, and there will be two proposed driveway entrances onto one hundred and fifty ninth street. Uh, the applicant did submit a traffic study. And uh, ha- it has been reviewed uh, by the county Public Works Department. Um, and uh, accepted by the Public Works Department. That traffic study did uh, uh, result in uh, some recommendations for three different uh, street improvements to be made. Uh, and those are listed in that stipulation um, uh, regarding uh, the street improvements. And the applicant has has agreed to do those uh, street improvements. Also, just to note that the stormwater plans have been reviewed and accepted by the uh, County Public Works Department. So in terms of minimum infrastructure, um, the application does meet county uh, county regulations uh, given compliance with recommended stipulations. Uh, also to note, the app, the applicant did uh, submit a lighting plan. And that lighting plan does comply with county's regulations uh, for lighting. Um, and there is also a stipulation requiring that all lighting uh, has to be shielded and downward facing and uh, no lights spillage offsite, which is a pretty typical uh, stipulation. Uh, in regard to outdoor signs, um, the applicant is proposing um, uh, one wall sign, uh, a sign on the conveyor belt system and two monument signs are proposed. Uh, uh, and uh, there was also a landscape plan uh, submitted uh, to provide a screening and kind of mitigation from the view of the building from one hundred and fifty ninth street, one hundred and fifty seventh street and uh, adjacent property to the west. Um, and also just to note that the um, based on uh, some comments at the neighborhood meeting, uh, the applicant um, has uh, revised that plan and showed um, eight additional evergreen trees. Um, uh, specifically in the northwest corner of the site uh, in in response to uh, some some neighbor neighbor comments. Um, just a couple of other uh. Review considerations here. So um, and a- again, I, the applicant's gonna speak to this also. But there's a section on page eleven of the staff report that talks about the building height. And um, so just to kind of clarify that, um, so the maximum height uh, for buildings is forty five feet. Uh, not including mechanical equipment that's located on on the roof. Um, and that's the uh, maximum height for that P E C three zoning district. Um, and then the New Century Air Center has a separate approved development plan um, for that property. Um, in in that plan, uh, the maximum height for buildings is sixty feet. The height of the facility or the building that's being pro- proposed is fif- fifty six feet tall. Um, and that's uh, excluding the rooftop mechanical equipment. And and so just to kind of put this into the record and and clarify that approval of that the building height shown in the development plans um, as permitted by that New Century uh, preliminary development plan. And um, uh, Article seventeen and section nine of our, the county uh, zoning and subdivision regulations. And then just kind of in addition to that, um, also in Article eleven of the zoning regulations. It also talks about flexibility of building design um, that's allowed in those planned uh, zoning districts. So kind of um. So kind of for all of those reasons that the building height is definitely meets requirements, but just wanted to add in that additional information. Part of this application is also asking, the applicant is asking for a parking deferral and a kind of reservation for future land, for that future parking. And so they are asking for that based on kind of their unique user characteristics for this cold storage building. And so they're, the applicant's proposing right now to have one hundred and sixteen parking stalls plus five ADA stalls for phase one, and then two hundred and thirty stalls plus ten ADA stalls, kind of at full build-out. And so the reasons that staff is supporting this parking deferral and, and the reasons stated by the applicant for this deferral is that the truck parking area is shown on the site plan. They're capable of being converted into future parking areas that could, could add approximately one hundred and fifty additional parking spaces. Second reason is that the cold storage facilities generally require less employee staffing and, and parking needs than typical industrial buildings. And then the third is that our current parking requirements in the zoning code would result in more parking than, than is necessary for this type of building. So like I said, staff does support that parking deferral request. And then the third thing is that's part of this application is also, so Article eleven of the subdivision regulations provides specific building design standards for buildings in the P E C three zoning district. And so the applicant is asking for, for a couple of deviations from those design guidelines. One is for the building materials and to, to allow this building to have a hundred percent metal wall panels instead of stone, brick, or glass, some of those materials that are called out in the regulation. And so the applicant's proposing the building to have white metal panels. I mean, that's partly because to try to keep the solar heat gain and that that would can reduce the performance of those freezer spaces. So. And then the second part to that is there is a regulation about articulation and for building facades that are over a hundred feet long. And so they're, they're asking for those deviations as well. So staff is in support of those deviations with a couple of changes to those building elevations. And one is to have the office portion of the, the exterior building to be, have more stone, brick, or glass. And then, and that should, would be kind of applying to the office portions on the southwest and east elevations of the building. And then secondly, to add some additional architectural elements that are shown on the southwest and north building elevations. And so the applicant has agreed to, to work on revising those elevations to kind of get more in compliance with those design requirements. And they have agreed to revise those elevation drawings, and so staff will continue to work with them on that. And kind of one final note here, the applicant did provide some information about noise, noise levels. And, and so we have a stipulation that just says that the, the site has to meet our noise requirements that are in, listed in Article eleven. Also, just for your information, in the back of the packet are memos from the Public Works Department, the Building Code Department, Johnson County Waste Water District, and City of Olathe. So that's for your information. And then, so finally, planning staff is recommending approval of the preliminary and final development plan for those, subject to the stipulations that we have listed on pages fourteen and fifteen. And just to note again, that staff is recommending a revision to stipulation number twenty-three. Just instead of having the street plans approved at time of building permit, that it would be at the stage of the final certificate of occupancy. And I think I'll stop there. If you have questions, I can answer this.
All right. Any questions from the board?
I've got one. John DeGrand. Diane, the proposed rail docks, is that a future thing, or is that going to be the rail, will it be rail serviced in day one, or is that a down the road?
I think it's future, but the applicant can address that more specifically when they give their presentation.
And then the streets are mentioned a couple of times. I just want to make sure that the improvements would be completed by Public Works and funded by a bond, or what is that? Is that correct?
No, so, so the street improvements, the developer incurs those costs. The county does not, but the county does approve those street plans to make sure that they meet public street standards and that they meet those warrants that are, that were recommended in the traffic study.
And then occupancy won't be offered until it is completed?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So those street improvements have to be constructed and completed prior to the final certificate of occupants, occupancy for the, for the building. So the idea is that those street improvements can happen while the building is also being constructed.
For sure. Okay.
Craig Connell. Diane, the, the two lots that face one hundred and fifty-ninth Street that are directly west of this plat, or plot, what are, are these empty right now? And what are they zoned? They're like nine point something acres each?
Are you talking about these two lots here?
Yes.
Yeah. Those are lots that are owned by the county, and they have that P E C three planned light industrial zoning district.
Okay. And then the lot just north of that, twenty-eight point nine acres, is that a residence?
That, that is, yes. It's a privately owned lot.
All right. So no further questions from the board. Okay. So let the applicant, if you want to make your present away to the podium, just your name and city and state.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Court Maxwell Pulsonelli Law Firm appearing today on behalf of Yukon Real Estate. We have a group of people on the development team that are with us. Axel Anderson, he's the Director of Development for Yukon Development, and then sitting in front of him, we have Casey Colburn and Caitlin Wolfe, both with Bartlett and West Engineering, serving as our civil engineers for this project and have been helping us put together this application. We are very excited to be here in front of you today. Want to thank Diane, want to thank Sean, want to thank the planning staff. We've been working with them for several months now and in a very positive fashion of bringing forward this application to you. And we're excited about this application because it's an eighty-five million dollar investment that we want to make in the county and at the Airport Commission on this land. And so we've been cognizant of working through all of the issues, and I think you'll see that in the staff report that Diane gave, but we'd also like to kind of take you through and highlight maybe some of the things we've been able to work out with county planning staff and work out as a development team to make sure that this is the right location and the right application for the county and all of the residents around us. So Yukon's mission in general is to build more cold storage across the United States. We've seen a burst of activity in the industrial area and building industrial buildings all throughout the United States, but we absolutely have an aging and old infrastructure that is not built for today's modern economy when it comes to cold storage. The rise of fresh food, the rise of delivery, the rise of all of these things. We have to build more, more cold storage throughout the United States, and that what, that is what Yukon is committed to doing and what they're doing at this site. And speaking of that site, the site is the northwest corner of New Century Airport and one hundred and fifty-ninth Street. And as Diane said, it's approximately thirty-six acres. It is vacant. It is undeveloped, but it is zoned industrial. It is zoned P E C three and always has been for a long period of time. And importantly, what you will see from this aerial is our neighbor directly to the east is Upfield. And that is not an accident. We are building this facility principally for the use of Upfield. The phase one that we are building, the approximately two hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet, and the conveyor system that will go across to Upfield is all about serving that client Upfield. Approximately sixty percent of the space in the cold storage facility will be used and dedicated to Upfield to be able to move product from Upfield into our location before it goes out to national distribution out there. So that's the reason that Yukon is here, is to go and develop, to develop for the actual need that Upfield has, that is already here, already a tenant, already been living and producing product out at New Century Airport. We're getting the cold storage right next to them so that we can be massively more efficient for them and for sort of all of Johnson County in that process. And I'll go through that in a little more detail. But as I said, eighty-five million dollars. Phase one is two hundred and ninety-one thousand square feet and the conveyor system. And Diane hit this, but this ground is all owned by the county. It's owned by the Airport Commission. We have executed a lease with the Airport Commission where we are ground leasing the ground from them. We will then build the facility on top of it, and then we will lease that facility to an operator that will actually operate the cold storage facility. We're a developer out there. We're placing the capital, doing the construction. We will lease it to an operator that will operate the facility, and then their client will be Upfield for approximately sixty percent of the volume in it. There are future phases that can be developed on this parcel, about another three hundred thousand square feet that can be put onto the parcel. And what we've shown through the plan is that progression of how that can happen, as the staff report notes. If we're going to come in and have those expansions, we need to come back to this board. We need to come back to the Board of County Commissioners and that. So we're really here about phase one that we're bringing forward to the Planning Commission and then to the Board of County Commissioners. But we wanted to show full development of what it could look like on the site. Super important, and we wanted to get it right out. It's not necessarily a requirement of the zoning code or otherwise, but there was controversy about this site six or seven years ago when another operator came in and proposed a cold storage facility on this. And we wanted to say right upfront, probably the biggest issue with that application, even though it was approved and went all the way through the process, was there was comments, substantial comments made about the use of anhydrous ammonia in that process. And so we very purposefully, as a development team, made sure that there will not be a refrigeration system that uses anhydrous ammonia. There will not be anhydrous ammonia at this facility. Instead, what we're using is this hybrid cascade refrigeration system. The refrigerants specifically are R five, one, three, A, and R one, two, three, four, YF. We wanted to get that out there. We wanted the public to know. We wanted them to understand. But those are synthetic blends that are substantially similar to, yet modern, more green, safer than, doesn't have ozone effects of the exact same type of refrigerant you have in your car's AC system, you have in your house's AC system. It's the same stuff. It's actually only better than that because it's used at industrial scale, but it is safe. It is non-toxic. It is not explosive. It does not have any of those issues. So first and most important point, we wanted this board to know. We wanted the public to know. We wanted the Board of County Commissioners to know the refrigeration system we're using is vastly different than the system that was proposed six or seven years ago. All of that refrigeration system will be on the roof of our facility, and it will be screened behind appropriate screening under your county regulations. Also, again, sort of about that application that happened six or seven years ago and caused concern and consternation. We wanted to be good neighbors in this. We wanted to get ahead of the issue. We wanted to be able to go and communicate everything we knew about our application at the time with all of the neighbors, the residential neighbors that are around and about. So we hosted a voluntary neighborhood meeting that was approximately August twenty-second and met with the folks around us and answered questions for an hour in front of everyone to explain the application and go through it. And I'm sure you'll hear some more about it, but we wanted to attack the issues kind of head-on. Things that we heard in that process was traffic, stormwater, noise, light. Those were the concerns that neighbors brought up. And so what we wanted to talk through in this application, and Diane did a great job, but hit it really, really specifically, are kind of those concerns, one at a time, so every member of the commission could see how we were addressing those points. The first thing that we heard was about traffic. And the idea was traffic on one hundred and fifty-ninth Street and traffic on Moonlight Road. And when I say traffic, specifically truck traffic. The concern came out about truck traffic in that process. And so we looked through all of this, knowing that would be a concern and issue. How do we mitigate those components? And we think we've come up with a really good answer. The first is all truck traffic will be directed to New Century Parkway and will come through on one hundred and fifty-seventh Street. And that's what I can have shown here, is that one hundred and fifty-seventh Street is the north entrance, and that has a gate to it. That is a gated entrance for truck traffic to come in up on one hundred and fifty-seventh Street. Most importantly, we are not directing any truck traffic to one hundred and fifty-ninth Street or over to Moonlight Road. And how have we done that? Gated access. On the south side of our property is gated access that trucks cannot come out of that area whatsoever. So it is not set up for trucks to leave onto one hundred and fifty-ninth Street and then move out to Moonlight Road or otherwise. The only way they will be able to come is in and out of the gate on one hundred and fifty-seventh. One hundred and fifty-seventh drops directly onto New Century Parkway. New Century Parkway takes you down to I thirty-five or takes you through Olathe in that process. But a truck driver would have to go massively out of their way to come and then leave at one hundred and fifty-seventh Street, go on New Century Parkway, drive around to one hundred and fifty-ninth, and come on to Moonlight, right? So everything that we set was taking truck traffic away from one hundred and fifty-ninth and Moonlight Road. Next, about the issue of truck traffic. We really wanted to get specific about what's happening here with this application. And as we said, this application is all about cold storage. And I think this comment is helpful in some other things that we're going to talk about, about noise and light as well. Remember, as all know, this is P E C three. This is zoned for an industrial facility, right? We're only here about figuring out what the plan is and mitigating it, but this is zoned for industrial. Someday, somehow, this lot is going to be industrial. We believe this use is the best use. Why? If you have an average industrial user, you're going to have two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six trips, or three hundred or three hundred and forty two truck trips. The Amazon facility, we heard in our neighborhood facility, in our neighborhood meeting, substantial concern about the Amazon facility that is directly to our north. That Amazon facility, that distribution facility that they have out there, that has two thousand eight hundred and seventy seven trips and most importantly, five hundred and seventy five of those are truck. And I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, to go through this with so much detail, but I think it's important for a lot of the points that are going to be made. A typical warehouse per our traffic study, two hundred and ninety seven trucks. Yukon. What are we doing? With the two hundred and ninety one thousand square foot facility, we're going to have eighty two trucks a day. We're going to operate over twenty four hours. This is three trucks an hour. It is very minimal compared to what's going on at the Amazon facility or compared to what's going on at the industrial, other industrial facilities that exist out there. And then even more importantly, put on top of that, remember that conveyor system I told you about? That goes between us and upfield? We have from upfield with us, the head of global H R. They've calculated that they have nine hundred and sixty nine truck trips taken a month. Break that down. That's thirty two trips a day. Take that off. You're moving from eighty two to fifty trips a day, right? In a net form. Because that upfield facility is no longer running trucks out of us and going to the Gardner Intermodal over for North Point's Cold Point Facility. So the net, net, net of what we're doing, fifty trucks, fifty trucks a day. The Amazon facility, five hundred and seventy five. Eleven times the amount of trucks that happen at the Amazon facility versus what we do. If your concern is truck traffic, this is a fantastic use for this site. It has massively less impacts than would an Amazon facility, other industrial facilities or otherwise. Stormwater. There's been concerns about stormwater. Are we going to have stormwater exiting our site, exiting our development area and heading to the west? We planned all of the stormwater in accord with the A P W A manual, the manual that engineers set up stormwater with county regs. We looked at all of it to make sure that the existing condition, we wouldn't send water faster to our west or to our south. That being said, we heard from our neighbors that they have concerns about stormwater. And in fact, there has been issues between the county and those neighbors over the last twenty years about stormwater related to the Amazon facility and others. We're taking all of the stormwater. It's not heading to the west. All of it's heading to the south. Our neighbor to the south is the county. The county directed us, send all the water to the south. We're sending all of the water from the development that we're doing, from the buildings and the pavement. It'll go into the detention pond and it will go to the south. It is not going on to our neighbor's property on the west. So none of the development, the water, even though we could under the code, even though it all worked, even though it worked from an engineering standpoint, we wanted to be cognizant of what our neighbors had said, what the residential properties have said, and we're sending it to the south. Noise and light. A concern has been raised about the Amazon facility to our north. The truck beepers. They beep. They keep people up. They upset them, right? First and most important point I would do, they have five hundred and seventy five trucks a day. We're going to have a net fifty. We're eleven times smaller than that. We're talking three trucks an hour. We are on such a vastly different scale that just having that few of trucks is going to move us down the line in the amount of truck noise that will be out in this area. But I also think we we have better facts and we're going to have less of an impact on the neighbors. The reason why is the county requires seventy decibels at the property line. That's the max you can end up having is seventy decibels at the property line. The closest a truck can be to them, to the neighbors, to that property line is four hundred and thirty feet. The closest the actual truck docks will be where people would be backing in and out is eight hundred and thirty feet away. So what did we do? We went and looked at through the code and through sound studies of what would it take? What does a average truck beeper look like? And it can be up to a hundred and ten decibels, but as you get out that many hundreds of feet and then you go through screening and you go through landscaping and otherwise, that we are quite confident we will be below that decibel level, but only, it's not only our word. The county staff report says we have to comply with that seventy decibels at the property line and we will comply with that seventy decibels at the property line. But we also, through hearing that neighborhood concern, we continued to load more and more and more landscaping onto the site. I think the landscaping ordinance under the county would ask for seventeen trees. We're now up to sixty two trees that we've put on our western property line. We're also going to do everything that we can to not touch the existing vegetation that's on that property line. If you go out there and drive it today or tomorrow and drive around the fire lane access that there, it is a thick stand of trees that is over on the west side of this property. We're going to do everything we can to not not touch that. We wish we could put even more landscaping on that, but we've got to deal with that fire easement. We've got to deal with the detention. We've got to deal with the site that sort of that we have here. And so we have maxed out putting that landscaping and that evergreens on there. And we think it's going to substantially lower the truck noise between how few trucks we have, the distance and all of those evergreens and trees we're putting on the site. And then lastly, on light, everything we're using is a cut fixture. We understand the county's ordinance. We understand you have to be zero foot candles at the property line. We've done a lighting study. We'll meet the zero foot candles at the property line. I did a couple of quick elevations here. We'll go through kind of the rest of this a little bit faster, but an elevation of what this is. It's a modern industrial cold storage facility that's made of metal panels. We recognize the stipulation that staff put on here of can you work with us on the office side of this to put some stone or materials or articulation that's on the office component that's bumped out here. We understand that and we're going to work with them to come up with that. We also understand putting in a little more articulation that was put through the, through the study of and articulation really being paint colors and things like that that we can work for. We understand that requirement and we'll work with them on same. Here's a little bit more about the elevations, having the south looking at the office, the north elevation, the east elevation and the west elevation. That east elevation, I can't remember which commissioner asked about the rail docks. You'll see the docks are there and this will be ready for rail in phase one. So we will be able to take rail shipments in this in phase one and we'll work and get those tracks built out and built to appropriate standards. So, so that we can do that. That is part of our lease with the airport commission. This kind of walks through the phases. Phase one you'll see is the two hundred and ninety thousand square foot building and the conveyor that goes over to upfield. One B would be a bump out and expansion of that existing building and then phase two would be being able to, to build the facility to our western side. The next part I'm going to go through, Mr. Chairman, is really kind of some of the deviations and or just making sure that the record is clear on the approvals. And Diane did a great job of this, but one of the big things we wanted to make sure of was the height, right? The maximum height of the code is forty five feet, but the new century air center plan allows sixty feet in this. Our facility is fifty six feet, not including the mechanical units that go on top. So we all think we're in compliance, but we just wanted to make sure it was clearly in the record of the planning commission that if this was approved by the planning commission and the board, we were able to build the facility that we need here and the facility that we need is fifty six feet within the ability to have the mechanical units that go twelve feet up above it. The, the, you know, the, the sightline or the sightline study that we did here is very hard to see, but what this is trying to just give you is a so sense of scope and scale that at eight hundred and thirty feet, this is how far we are from the building to the property line. It is a substantial substantial run and that's really hard to see. So what we also tried to do was give you a little bit more focused that if you had a six foot person standing on the property line, they already have to look through the existing tree hedges. We're then going to have evergreens put all throughout. We think it will be very difficult, if not impossible, to see from our west property line to see the facility out there. Just kind of comparable heights to more give people a sense maybe of facilities that they know. There's the lineage facility that's on I thirty five as you're driving. That's eighty five feet. We are substantially less than that facility. And then this Dinesco I F F South Tower, that's the property that's basically just to the south of us. So to give you a sense, that's sixty feet. So we're approximately that exact same height as that facility that is to the south of us across one hundred and fifty ninth street. Parking deviation. You guys do codes. Everybody does codes and you do them very one size fits all, right? The one size fits all being you're going to develop this much area, then we need to go, you know, buy one parking space per thousand square feet. Because when you do a code, you could have a manufacturing facility, you could have a distribution facility, you could have all kinds of different things that are happening. And so your code says build three hundred and eighty seven stalls. Since we know what the user is, we know this is specifically cold storage and we know who we're going to serve. We know that we're going to have thirty six employees per shift. We're going to run twenty four hours a day. We're going to have three shifts in that. There's going to be thirty six employees. So if you built three hundred and eighty seven stalls, you're building ten times the amount of parking that we need for those thirty six employees. We asked for a deviation to allow us to build a hundred and twenty stalls. We're going to be four times over parked for what our actual need is. But we thought that was kind of that fair compromise to make sure we're respecting the code. But at the same time, have the right amount of parking for the facility that we have. If we built that more parking, all you're doing is creating more pavement in that. You're creating more runoff. You're creating, you know, more issues in it. So we think really this is a, a good thing for all involved. And lastly, we, we talked about this a lot, but the design deviation. The reason for the design deviation is you got to have a building that is airtight. Air is the enemy of cold storage, right? And so you can't have porous materials and stone and things like that. It's got to all be metal and the more you know, normally we try to have articulations in buildings. The more articulations you have, the more juts, all that is is more seams where air can get through. So very much a key in cold storage is have it be as straight a box as you can and have it be metal panels. That being said, we've worked with staff on, on some components and we'll continue to work with staff with the elevations. We've read the stipulations. We've talked with Sean. We've talked with Diane. We are very confident. We can continue to work with staff in this county towards getting the plans dialed in. So with that, we're going to create five hundred jobs with this, a hundred permanent jobs, three hundred to four hundred construction jobs. It's going to be a high quality facility. It's going to serve a current customer of the county already in upfield. We're going to create massive synergies. We're going to create property tax revenues. And we're going to get this vacant and underutilized parcel on the tax rolls and starting to roll forward with a positive development. We would ask for your support, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission of the preliminary and final development plans. We'd ask you to approve the height, parking and design that's shown in the development plan. We have read all the stipulations, stipulation one through twenty four. We agree with those stipulations. And with that, I'd stand for any questions that the board would have of myself or any of the team. And we'd also ask for, you know, reserve some time that we would be able to come up and respond to any comments that may come up through the neighborhood meeting process or
Yeah, and procedural things. We, we're going to ask you questions now. We're going to open it up to the public and then we'll have give you an opportunity to do a rebuttal at the
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate that.
Questions from the board?
Yeah, Craig Connell, I've got maybe three or four things. Back on the slide about truck traffic, if you can go back to the last slide. So the right hand column is based on phase one A.
Correct.
So when you saw six hundred thousand is built out, would that double basically?
I think that's a fair estimate, right?
Okay. All right. The second question is the slide that showed the distances to the property line.
There we go.
Keep going. There's, there may be an elevation view that showed a there we go, this one, yes. So this is again, just the phase one building. When the phase two buildings added where it says trailer parking here, I assume in the middle.
Yeah.
What's that distance going to be from that building to the property line?
Think probably the best is you can kind of see it that this, can you see the pointer?
Right.
That's the four hundred and thirty feet line right there.
To that parking spot.
To that parking spot. So if you go down and you built out that phase two, what's that look like? Maybe it's four fifty or something like that, that you're just a little bit further. One of the good points to make about that Commissioner Connell is of course, on that sort of noise point, that other building with the trucks moving out the other way, you're going to have a block of a lot of that sound from phase one and a block from the sound of phase two as well.
Last question is, so is the noise generation really the backing up of the trucks? I mean, the, the hum of the refrigeration equipment on the roof is, is blocked by the enclosure, I assume, or mostly directed up, the noise is directed up.
I think that's right. I think in any industrial facility, usually what you hear of comments out there is about the truck beepers. And I think the truck beepers are actually regulated by OSHA and they have certain levels that they have to be at. And so it's kind of a, a system of the modern economy of the world out there is those truck beepers that exist. So our goal is to do all we can through site design and through distances to try to minimize that impact and be cognizant of the county code to make sure that we're in compliance with it.
All right. Thank you. Jeff Huff, the average on the trucks fifty two or, or is what we were saying?
Yeah, eighty two, I think that's fifty eight out, twenty four in, I believe, is how we get to the eighty two. And then you have the deduct from the upfield facility of another thirty two. So you get to that net fifty.
Okay. So then, so that's an average. Do you have a feel for from ten P M to six A M? Is the traffic heavier or lighter? Does that average, does that?
We, we've discussed that a little bit and it, it, it really is, it, it's not like the Amazon facilities, right? Where it's really busy at eight A M and really busy at five P M and you start to hit peaks and stuff like that. It really is a flow throughout all of the periods of time.
Okay. Sorry, I've got a few. The refrigerant, is that a similar refrigerant that's used in other facilities in that area or is it becoming industry standard? What does that look like?
I think this is, I, I would, I would say this is advanced in the system in that this is like the cutting edge of the industry. This is where it's going. There are still facilities in this county that are cold storage and use anhydrous ammonia. We are not that facility. We are going and using the, the sort of best available technology out there to have the lowest impact to our product, our employees, our neighbors, the county and otherwise in these facilities.
And then the final question for me is the, on the conveyors, the amount of truck traffic is lowered. I mean, I would imagine emissions and all of that. Have you done any kind of math to what that looks like as far as footprint? As far as carbon footprint, or you know what, what that looks like?
I'll only speak to, and I've heard this all third hand, and there's others that would be able to tell this better, but a very big focus of upfield is to lower its carbon footprint, right? To meet those requirements of E S G and otherwise. And that's a very big focus of Yukon and our operator and everyone. And so that conveyor facility is incredibly important to all of us as it improves the carbon footprint of everybody, taking those nine hundred and sixty nine trucks a month that we're leaving the upfield facility, carting out across Gardner, going to the Cold Point facility that North Point has at the Intermodal facility, right? We're taking all of that sort of back and forth truck traffic off of the road. So I don't have an exact carbon, you know, tons of carbon and things like that.
It is a focus for both.
It's a substantial through this small capital investment of the conveyor back and forth. We're taking all of those monthly trips off and obviously that's year on year, month on month, a substantial amount of truck traffic we're pulling out of the, out of our road systems and out of the, the overall environment.
Any other questions from the board?
Bob Paulson, I've got one that just kind of falls on the same line. Since you're going to be utilizing Since you're going to be utilizing rail cars, is that going to substantially reduce the amount of truck traffic as well?
Yeah, it's it is absolutely, we did a take or pay contract with the airport commission, right? So we are paying for that rail service. Whether we use it or not, we're paying for the rail service. That was very important to the airport commission. So all of us on the Yukon side are incented to use those rail cars because we're paying for them anyways. And you're absolutely right that when you can use rail cars and use them efficiently, you're just pulling more trucks off the road, right? So we are incented to get trucks off the road and use that rail car system that the county has provided than that this site provides.
Donna Getzmann, I just had a question. You were talking about keeping the truck traffic off one hundred and fifty ninth and Moonlight that those gates on one hundred and fifty ninth would be locked. But my question is, will your address show one hundred and fifty seventh street? Because right now what happens with some of the intermodal, GPS takes them down two hundred and fifteenth street, which is a gravel road. It's down, I mean, that's totally separate from you guys, but you know, how, when a trucker, how are you going to negotiate that? When a trucker puts in a GPS and it takes them to one hundred and fifty ninth or Moonlight Road?
Yeah, it's it's a great question. I think honestly, staff can probably answer that better as it works in almost every city I've ever been a part of. As we, as the applicants have no real control over that, the the it is assigned by the county and the building department of what our address will be. But I hear you loud and clear, we've run into this issue before. And if we can have it addressed, we obviously have, you know, no concern about that and are happy to have a whatever address is best in that process. But I think that's really out of our control as an applicant and in the control of the county and otherwise of what we get addressed at. So I'm, I hate to punt to staff, but I think I'm going to punt that one to staff.
Fine.
All right. This is Bob again, kind of addressing that possibly. Working with industrial plants, a good portion of my career, a lot of those will have a truck delivery address that would be where your gate shack is. Whereas billing, personnel, all of that has a separate address that might show where the offices are on one hundred and fifty ninth. I think if you could address it that way, that would help.
That's a great point, Commissioner. And from our standpoint, obviously, as as applicant, we're we're game for whatever the county can pull off in their systems. But that makes a lot of sense to me.
All right, I think that's the questions we have for you at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner.
All right, then public comments. We'll open that up to to public comments if anybody would like to come to the podium, name, address, and then we'd love to hear from you.
Hello, good to be here tonight. I'm really happy, we're getting a Whataburger in Olathe. I just thought I would announce that, November sixth, right out in front of Menards. My name's Mike Jensen and we do own the property just directly to the west of the development. And first of all, I'd like to applaud the county and the developer. The process this time around has been so much better than it was with Lennage. So I want to thank Jay and his team. Lennage wanted to bring in ninety thousand pounds of anhydrous ammonia and build a ninety foot tall building right next to our property and next to the Johnson County Jail. It takes all their air from the ground and ammonia follows the ground. And Mallard, who was Lennage, had just leaked ninety thousand pounds in Mobile and put two hundred and twenty five people in the hospital. So we like this project as neighbors. We don't mind the height, a little bit of height, we understand all that. And so we want to compliment the county and developer on this. The the traffic issue, no matter which way you cut it, we're adding thirty two more trucks that are down on the parkway now. They're going to be right next to our property with backup beepers. And we've been assured that it'll meet code. But right now on our property, when we actually check it, the fans from upfield, the backup beepers, everything. When there's backup beepers from Amazon, right now they're in violation of the county's sound code, according to this. Once the horse is out of the stall, it's awful hard to get it back in. And staff recommended that the applicant provide a noise study. I don't think this was, is, has there been a noise study actually done? Or has somebody pulled a a chart of decibel and distance off of the internet? I can do that, but that's not a noise study. And Corb's not a sound engineer, I don't believe, and I'm not either. So we would like to actually see some good hard data on noise. Right now with Amazon, they make the point that it's not, it's not good to bring the Amazon situation into this. If you're a neighbor next to Amazon, it's absolutely relevant. You can't be on your back porch or enjoy your property at night without a beep, 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 beep. Forty times a minute. Code allows fifteen times a minute and it goes to seventy five decibels when a backup beeper goes next to my neighbor's property. So we want to believe that it's going to be within code. But our past history tells us we can't trust something like this. We live in the real world, we don't live with tables and engineering charts. We found that out the hard way. When Amazon went in, we believed all the development numbers and our pond ended up getting silted in. All the runoff was directed on to our property. And as far as that goes, thank you for directing the water south. Thank you so much for that. I know I'm out of time.
I would just ask, we want to hear, we want to hear from you.
Okay, so I would just ask that we actually have a real sound study. I'm not a sound engineer, I'm not a, I'm not a cooling engineer. I I've learned a lot more about these things than I ever cared to, living next to, living next to the airport. We're not even that concerned about the truck traffic. I believe that Director Johnson and New Century, maybe not right at first, but I believe over time with a learning curve. Teaching truck drivers what they have to do, right? We all have, we all have to be taught what we have to do. We believe that's solvable, we believe all this stuff is solvable. We did offer to give an easement to the developer on our property to install a berm. That's the other thing that we're concerned about. A berm would help with sound, it would help with sightline, and it would help with light. We have no complaints about the light, I've got full size plans and the light plan is wonderful. It's what Amazon should have done when they built it. We had, they had to go back in and change their lighting after the fact. Also, that plan said they were going to have screening on the roof. They didn't get it up for two years. There was no screening on the roof. Their plan said that they were going to have cedar trees, the cedar trees were about this tall. So what was proposed on the plan didn't happen. So this has a completely different feel to it and we're very, very happy about that. But a a berm would solve the problem. I do want to say that the backup beepers, the decibel level of a backup beeper is the same as a chainsaw. The decibel range is exactly the same and they're about three hundred foot from our property line. Sound carries differently when it's bouncing off of concrete and going across concrete than it does on grass. You have acoustical issues and everything else. So we would like a a sound study and we'd also like to talk about more about the easement to put a berm. And we'd, we'd be willing to let the berm be built on our property. So overall, we are excited that the county is going to have some more tax money. And that this property is going to be developed with something that we feel is responsible. We understand the squeeze from the railroad tracks. There's not really enough room for the county to put a berm on the property because of the fire access road and the things that Corb has already shared. So we would be willing to allow the berm to be built on our land. I think, I think that's about all. The other thing that I will say. Want to be careful how I say this. The last time when Lennage was coming in and we were assured that the sound wouldn't be an issue, we went up and did a sound check on Lennage's property line. Eighty six decibels with no beepers, just from cooling equipment. So I believe that, I believe we're entitled to a real sound study. So I would, I would ask for that and I would also ask that we would consider putting a berm in. And I appreciate the extra trees and all the efforts that are being done. I don't want to, I don't want to minimize that, I want to be very, very thankful for that. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else like to share any more public comments? All right. Let's see. So, so. Let's do this, there is a rebuttal.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, planning staff. I would advise to allow the applicant an opportunity to come back and respond to his comments, questions. Staff can also try to add, answer any.
Right, yeah, yeah. Once we do that, then we can ask some additional questions of applicant, staff and public.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the for the time. And honestly, thank you to Mr. Jensen. He's been a a real partner in this application. He's concerned about his property and his other neighbors' property and we understand that, right? We're an industrial airport and we're building industrial, but they have rights too. And he's voiced those and been a strong advocate for his position. And we've tried to listen to those and be able to address that in in many of the things that we brought forward. And I wish I could stand here and just say, absolutely, let's do a sound study and let's do it tomorrow, right? The problem is, is that sound studies take a long time, right? And they're theoretical until things are built. And we are on a timeline to deliver this facility to our client upfield. So we did the best that we could in the time that we had to be able to move this forward of looking at the distances and working through what we think the decibels are. That being said, we're in no way finished and no way do we want the discussion to end here with the planning commission tonight or with the county commission in, you know, fifteen or twenty days. We are happy to continue to work with Mr. Jensen, work with the airport authority as our landlord, work with the county as our approving body to think through, how do we address those concerns? And make sure that we are good neighbors in this process. We have tried to do that through the landscaping and through the distances and otherwise. But the ability for us to go and have a hard sealed stamped sound study from an audiologist at this period of time, he's right. I am not a sound engineer in any form or fashion, I'm a, I'm a silly dirt lawyer, right? That comes and makes presentations, so. But it is not, it is point, that is not dismissing his point. We are happy to continue to work on that issue. We know what the code says and we know that we have to follow it. And by the way, if Amazon's not following the code, I am with Mr. Jensen that the county needs to go and enforce that on Amazon. But I come back at the end of the day that I know we're going to do eighty two trucks, right? And if you break that down, that's three to four trucks an hour. And even if those beepers are going, I think we're within full standards of the county's code. But everything that we've seen is that, hey, the distance is going to matter and we're not just going over pavement. We're going over four hundred feet of grass out there and otherwise. So we will comply with the code. We would ask for this body to move it forward, but in no case asking this body to move it forward does that mean we're done talking with Mr. Jensen? Or with our landlords or others about how do we find satisfaction on that issue? To the other point of the berm, Mr. Jensen did bring it up, we talked about it as a development group. We are happy to work with him and the county at looking at berming his land and helping and and doing that there. We are absolutely open to that, open to those discussions and open, open, working through that. The only thing I would note, and hey, it's Mr. Jensen's property, there's a heck of a lot of trees there, mature, mature growth trees. And what happens when you berm it? You cut all of that down, you clear cut all of it. And yes, you build a berm, but you lose all of sort of that natural landscaping that is there at the very beginning of it. So, but that's the prerogative of anyone can make those decisions. And yes, we are open to working through site plans and landscaping and otherwise between our landlord of the airport commission and Mr. Jensen and otherwise. Of how do we get to that point of doing berms and so forth? The only part that I would put out there is we're happy to continue to work with staff, we're happy to continue to work with Mr. Jensen. We do need to move this application forward. We've been at this for a long time this summer trying to get everything. I know it's the first time this commission has seen it, but you guys were reorganizing, we were switching from the different boards. We we're, we're behind the process already and we have a global client in upfield that needs a facility going and a deadline that we need to meet for them. And so we really need to move this application. And that's in no way to minimize anything that's said here or to send the vibe that we don't want to work to be a good neighbor in this process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, questions?
Yeah, Greg Connell, I guess on the noise issue, so I spent my whole working career building power plants around the world. And invariably, in industrial applications like this, we would have sound guarantees at fence lines, this financial penalties. That we had to meet with a running power plant. So what options does the county, county owns the land, what options do they have to put conditions on the lease? To enforce sound guarantees at property lines?
Sean Pendley, planning staff, I would not be able to comment on the lease with the airport commission. Unfortunately, I don't believe we have airport staff here, but I would ask Mr. Maxwell if he knows if there was any. I I think they had some provisions that they added in, talking about some safety guarantees and things on the site. I'm not aware of any incentives or requirements regarding noise. And and I would also ask Mr. Maxwell if he could answer the question too about the the lease that that may have already been approved by the airport commission. But well, I think that'd be a question for the applicant. Planning staff couldn't answer any questions regarding the lease. In terms of zoning regulations, there are no requirements for noise studies as part of a development. We just have those requirements, our our regulations for decibels at the property line. If, so to answer that in terms of our zoning regs, there's no requirements by our regulations to require a specific type of noise study. It's really just a matter of what the applicant can agree to and meet the requirements. And then whatever the zoning board or board accounting commissioners would recommend and approve.
Mr. Connell, to play off Sean's points, we do have an approved lease with the airport commission that is approved and signed. And in that, it just has the general requirements of meeting county code and those components in it. It has nothing specific about that point, but it just goes back to meeting all the code and the code requirements in the development that we develop.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sean, another question then. Does the county enforce, maybe you don't know, I don't know, but do, does the county enforce noise regulations? And is Amazon getting fined or something because they're not meeting their commitments or, I mean, what what's the follow up for this? If a year down the road, this thing's making all kinds of noise and and their local residents have noth- nothing to come back on?
Sean Pendley, the county does enforce our zoning regulations. If we have a complaint regarding noise or any other violation of our zoning regs, we do enforce those requirements. We have a zoning enforcement officer that would inspect the site. We don't normally carry around sound meters, but for a complaint regarding noise, I would assume we would need to obtain that. We had at one time, I think, a sound meter, I'm not sure about currently. But we would follow up and inspect any reported violations. For noise, if there's a complaint about noise, staff would work with the applicant to arrange of access to the site and inspect and follow up on that. And that may include taking sound readings and measurements for sound, yes. So staff would enforce any reported violations. Not every reported violation may be a a true violation that would have to be enforced and checked, but staff would do that, staff would follow up on that. And then as far as action on enforcement, we don't immediately fine an applicant for a violation. We notify them of the violation, we give them an opportunity to remedy that and to correct it. And we go through a process with a notice of violation. correct it. And we go through a process with a notice of violation. And then if there's repeated violations at that point, we would, uh, could either issue fines, could, uh, take an action before codes court or, or other enforcement options. But first, we would notify an applicant and give them an opportunity to remedy that if there is a reported violation.
Jeff Huff, is the, uh, the filing, is it, uh, online, written, phone of a, a complaint? Is that a fairly straightforward process? What does that look like? Just for edification?
For, uh, if a property or a, or a neighbor or anybody wanted to file a complaint, uh, that could be a call, it could be an email. We do have a, an online complaint, um, option on our zoning, uh, on a planning and zoning page. We do have an option for complaints to be filed online. We have information where they can contact planning staff and call or email the, the planner on duty. Uh, there's various options for reporting a violation.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any other questions for applicant, staff, public? Thank you. Uh, so at this time, we will close the public comments. Uh, then now at this point, just a discussion among the board members. Are there any things that we need to discuss as we, uh, move towards uh, making a motion?
Greg Connell, so I, I guess I'm still sensitive to the noise.
Yes.
Issue. Um, I live out in the country because I wanted it to be quiet. And I'm unfortunately like a mile and a half from Panasonic now. So that's, that's changing for me. But, uh, so I'm real sensitive to the noise situation. And I, I gotta believe we gotta come up with a better solution than just a, a verbal guarantee that, oh yeah, we're going to keep the noise to, to 70 or whatever at the fence line. So what, what options do we have here as a zoning board to, uh, improve that, that situation and have some better assurance for the residents of what's going to happen here?
Um, unfortunately, I didn't read that section.
Rather, rather than just deny, I mean, I don't want to deny.
No, no, i- i- it, it is real. And I think all of us here, we're on the West zoning board because we have property and we want to, you know, uh, enjoy and appreciate the opportunity to live where we do. And so, I mean, I, I agree, you know, I just think that there, I don't, I don't know what that, what that looks like. I, I'm just going to be honest. Yes, sir.
Roger Spears, I think what I heard Sean say was there is no stipulation within zoning rules, the, our zoning processes to deal with questions of law, uh, with, with the noise guarantees. So unfortunately, I, it seems to me like it would, it would revert to a, a complaint and rectifying the complaint. And I, I sympathize completely with, with the idea that you're living with a noisy neighbor. Um, but I don't, it doesn't seem to me that it's a part of the request for zoning.
All right. Well, we'll, we'll address this first, but there may be, and I will do some research, if there is a, a way that we could develop a motion and, and something that we would send up to the Board of County Commissioners to address and look at as the West zoning board, because we are unique to the East in, in that situation. So let's do, put our thinking caps on and see what that looks like. If there is a, um, uh, in other areas that have kind of a similar type of situation that we could do some research on. So, but I, I can appreciate, and we want to make sure we address that because that, that is real. There's a reason that we own land and, and live where we do. So, uh, any other, any other thing from the, the board members?
I, uh, this is Bob. I'd like to kind of speak to that a little bit. Um, I believe that is, uh, outside of our scope.
Okay.
Um, honestly, um, by our discussions, the board of county commissioners will see that.
Yes, okay.
And as a concern of ours. And if there is anything that they can do to address it, I'm sure that they will.
So we'll just talk about it a lot?
What, what I, well, yes, because what I've seen is, um, we really don't have good noise ordinances in our county, and they have no teeth.
Okay. All right.
Chairman, uh, Sean Pendley, planning staff, I will just remind the board that the applicant did provide in their narrative and in the, in their updated, uh, applicant supplemental information, they did provide the, uh, what they would anticipate the noise to be from the proposed development. They do provide some of that information. I know that it may not be a certified noise study, but it, it did at least provide some information to that concern. I'll just say that. And to clarify, there are no requirements on the regulations for a noise study for any development, but there are again, noise limits. And there are, are regulations for planned district zoning. So we actually do have noise regulations here in a, in this zoning. In RUR, in agricultural property, we do not. But in planned zoning, we do have at least limits. But, um, I think Mr. Leipzig also wanted to make comments to the board as well.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, Jay Leipzig, one additional thought is item number 24, but the noise levels that are stipulated. My understanding is if the noise level, levels do exceed Article 11 of the regulations, that would be, it, the preliminary development plan, the final development plan would not be in conformance. So that's another issue that could give some additional protection or bring it back if it needs to be amended or some other procedure to do that. So, um, just, just another note, and I also think that, um, uh, the applicant's, uh, uh, attempts to, to work with Mr. Jensen and kind of look at a, uh, how they might be able to resolve some of those issues with, with, you know, perhaps keeping some of the trees, but then still being able to burn part of it, I think might be very effective as well.
All right. All right. So at this point, um, I would, uh, a, a motion, if somebody would like to make a motion for us?
Roger Spears, I move to recommend approval of application number W 23 dash 315 dash PDP slash FDP for a preliminary and final development plan for a refrigerated warehouse facility located at the New Century Air Center, subject to the stipulations and for the reasons outlined in the staff report and including the staff revisions to stipulation number 23.
Do I have a second?
Bob Paulson, I'll second that.
Bob has seconded. Uh, can we take a vote?
Don DeGrand.
Aye.
Cherry Atwell is absent. Donna Getzmann.
Aye.
Roger Spears.
Aye.
Jeff Huff.
Aye.
Greg Connell.
Aye.
And Bob Paulson.
Aye.
Uh, six O is what I have. Okay. Thank you very much.
And Chairman, if, if I could just interject here real quick. So this will also go to the Board of County Commissioners for final action on, um, October 19th, 9:30 a.m., uh, here in this building, 111 South Cherry, uh, and actually here in this room. So.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Um, I believe at this point that, that we are done. And so I, that the meeting is adjourned.
We have a motion and a second.
Oh, I need a motion.
Yeah, yeah.
I would move that we adjourn. Roger Spears.
Donna Getzmann, second.
All right.
Aver say aye.
Oh, uh, all in agreement?
Aye.
Uh, we got the ayes. Six O. Thank you.
Thank you.